Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at six P. M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. We have Pastor Danny Fudge here from Emmanuel Baptist Church. So please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you bow with me for prayer? Gracious God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for the freedoms that we have in this great nation. We thank you for the peace, prosperity, safety, and health that we enjoy here in this corner of Nebraska. We ask that you bless our leaders here in our city, state, and nation, that they will lead with confidence, courage, seeking your guidance along the way. Lord, watch over and bless our military personnel at home and abroad, collect our police officers, firefighters, paramedics, doctors, and nurses at all hospital staff. We celebrate you and your son, Jesus Christ, not only this time of the year, but every time of the year, and in his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Danny.
I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take a roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I'm I move we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Byrne, second by Welch. Comments or discussion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, an amendment. I'd like to move item fifteen C to right after item seven on the agenda. So we'll have the presentation on the Affordable Housing Action Plan, and then we'll go to fifteen C and we'll we'll take it as a motion and a vote.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister to amend. Any comments or questions on the amendment? Please vote.
Councilman Preister, yours coming through.
I voted twice, but apparently not. So I voted yes.
Okay. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And we have a motion by Byrne, second by Welch to approve the agenda as amended now. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I vote yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Is there anyone that would like to? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request that item number eight A be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, we're we're I don't think we need that. We'll just remove that from the consent agenda. Councilman Cook, did you have change?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I I make a request that we remove item six from the consent agenda.
Okay, so we are removing item eight A and item six.
Yes, I guess there's no need for a vote, but yes.
Okay. All right, and the Councilman Burns?
Yep, and then I'd just like to remove eight B from the consent agenda as well.
So Councilman Burns is adding eight B to be removed. Any further requests? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, removing eight A, request of Kathy, Councilwoman Welch. Item six requested by Cook and item Burns. That's B two, what is that? Eight B, okay. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Do we need a motion? I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. So that will take us to item six, approval of the claims. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion. We approve the claims, then I would like to make an amendment.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to amend to remove two claims from the minute record under community betterment on page ten. The Better Community, the Bellevue Community Foundation Light Up Bellevue payment of thirty-five thousand and Bellevue Community Foundation BCF Community Events payment of fifty thousand.
Second.
Motion to amend as stated by Councilman Cook and made by Councilman Cook, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions on the amendment? Okay, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, we have a motion by Cook, seconded by Welch to approve the claims and now as amended. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I've got five yes votes and one with an abstention. Is that right?
Did I accidentally hit abstain?
Pardon?
Who abstained?
Oh.
Don Prester.
Okay.
Councilman Prester.
You look this way, it's like, oh.
Okay.
I know.
All right, so motion passes. Thank you, and we'll go to item seven, special presentation, seven A, presentation from Hannah Kealan on the Affordable Housing Action Plan.
Tonight, we have Tim Kealan and Keith Carl here from Hannah Kealan Associates. L B eight sixty-six was passed a couple years ago. One of the requirements of that legislation was that cities the size of Bellevue would have an affordable housing action plan in place by January first of two thousand twenty-three. Last summer, the city contracted with Hannah Kealan. We did that for a couple of reasons. Hannah Kealan has great expertise in this area. Also, they had conducted a Sarpy County-wide housing study a couple of years ago, part of which Bellevue participated in. And so we asked them to come back and do our study. So for the last six months or so, they have been working diligently to put together this plan. It has included public participation. It has included steering committee meetings. I would like to thank all the volunteers and all the people that participated in that. That was a lot of hours' worth of work. So what you have in front of you tonight is the culmination of that endeavor. So the documents we gave you a few weeks ago to take a look at, just because there's a lot of information, a lot of material there. I will turn it over to Hannah Kealan, and they'll do a brief presentation and be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tammy. And if you would just state your name and address for the clerk's record, that'd be great.
Okay. First name is Keith, last name Carl, C A R L. I'm with Hannah Kealan Associates, thirty-two seventy-five Holdridge Street in Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you.
Okay. First of all, really appreciative of the opportunity to be speaking in front of you folks tonight. As was introduced by Tammy, my name is Keith Carl. I'm a community planner with Hannah Kealan Associates. A community planning and research consulting firm based out of Lincoln. Tim Kealan is with me today as well. After we go over a brief presentation of the Affordable Housing Action Plan, we'll be open to any questions or comments from you folks. But I kind of just wanted to go over what is the executive summary to that housing study. There the the Housing Action Plan itself is, you know, almost a couple hundred pages. So if we went over that page by page, we'd be here for a very long time. So just want to go over the executive summary real quick and give you some of the highlights that were documented within the Affordable Housing Action Plan. Tammy kind of gave you the rundown of why this study is required, a little bit about the housing steering committee that we met with. We had representation from the city, from major employers, nonprofit organizations. We're part of this we're part of this committee. So we had a lot of good cross-section input from a number of different groups within the community and really made it a more holistic plan and something that we were able to gather a lot of information from and get a plan that is going to be, you know, something that the city will be able to use, something that developers will be able to use to give guidance and give direction towards housing development over the next five years, as well as also the next ten years. We do have statistical projections for a ten-year period. The Affordable Housing Action Plan itself, which we'll get into, is kind is more of a a five-year plan, and and I'll kind of talk about that a little bit as we go on. The executive summary, page one, just a brief introduction to the the study process. We talked about legislative bill eight sixty-six already, as Tammy had mentioned. So just some text kind of talking about the introductory process. Included a couple of tables as part of this executive summary as well. Table one, highlighting population trends and projections. We basically honor census data from two thousand, two thousand and ten, and we included the most preliminary twenty-twenty census data in the sense that it is considered redistricting data for the congressional districts for each state. So the actual summary file is is not going to be released until later this year. It's just undergone a series of integrity reviews and, you know, making sure that the data is all correct. So we were able to use what was available for us from the twenty-twenty census. And one of the good things to see was that there's a pretty significant jump in population from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty. And we think that the trends over the next five and ten years will generally reflect that same trend as well. You know, based upon new housing creation, based upon commuter population, you know, those that commute into the city for work that may eventually find housing in the community. We do think that there is, well, that and annexation procedures as well, which have taken place here over the last the last few years, that that will all contribute to some population increases within the community. There's a whole table profile that's part of an appendix to this to this Affordable Housing Action Plan. So there's a lot more data that goes into the next set of tables I'm going to talk about, which deals with housing unit target demand. There's a number of different components that go into this in the sense that if we're looking to alleviate a certain percentage of some of the most critical housing issues being experienced in the community, which those are underneath that first asterisk on that table, this is roughly about how many housing units are going to be needed to be able to do that. So we come up with a rather large number on that, and then we have to scale it backwards a little bit based upon what we call a housing development capacity. So that's how much land and financial resources you have available to actually be able to do the housing projects that we recommend. And that's how we come up with the number of one thousand nine hundred twelve housing units for the community over the next five years and then three thousand, just over thirty-two hundred for the ten-year projection of the study. We also broke it down into some other statistical components, including housing units for purchase, rehab, resale, or re-rent activities. So that kind of covers the housing rehabilitation efforts that are needed. We talked a little bit about downtown housing. We talked a little bit about workforce housing. And going above and beyond this table, in the full study, you'll see a breakdown for housing demand based upon population groups, based upon price products or price points. And then we've also taken, I'm going to skip over page, page four real quick, but page five talks more about the housing unit target demand information, but the focus is on how many housing units would be needed that would be considered affordable. So we're taking a look at generally households eighty percent of area median income or less. And when I talk about area median income, that's kind of where table three comes in, the one that was before this one. So you can kind of see, based upon family size, what their percentage of income is as it relates to what the area median income, like the the standard of area median income is, which is a four-person household at one hundred percent AMI. So you can kind of, you know, feel around on that table for a little bit and find out, you know, if it's a if it's a three-person household making sixty percent of area median income, this is what that income is. So that table and table four are kind of linked together. So there is that breakdown. And just taking a look at housing households that are eighty percent of area median income or less, that's what we consider kind of the affordable housing demand for the community. Part two of the executive summary is the five-year Affordable Housing Action Plan. So you may be asking yourselves, well, the whole study is called Affordable Housing Action Plan. Why do we have an action plan within the action plan? Well, this section is a five-year projection, not just of statistical analysis, but also of designated housing projects that we feel would be a fit for the community. So you're taking a look at different initiatives and different programs in the sense of, you know, maintaining, you know, housing investment funding programs, as well as, you know, initiatives for, maybe it's senior rental housing program, or maybe it's a a single-family rental housing program or things of that nature. So it's it's a number of different projects, like project-specific programs for the community. And then detailing the number of units that could be that should be developed as part of that initiative or part of that program. We also provided an estimated cost to that program as well as a cost subsidy, which is kind of our reasonable assumption or reasonable estimate of about how much of that project could be covered by an outside funding source, be it a local, state, or federal funding institution, be it private contributions or things of that nature, too. So there is that component that some of these projects could be covered by, you know, donations, by grants, whatever it may be. You know, to buy down the cost of the project and make it something that seems more more appealing to a housing developer, something that's more appealing to the city. So there's a number of different recommendations within that Affordable Housing Action Plan itself. With that action plan, again, we kind of focus mostly on just the affordable aspect, that eighty percent area median income or less. So we're looking at, you know, kind of the segment of population that really needs the housing, your low income, your moderate income. Not so much on the upper income, but there are some statistical analysis that is completed in the full study that kind of talks about some of those upper incomes as well. So we wanted to be sort of a a comprehensive look at what is needed in terms of housing in the city of Bellevue, but more of a focus also on just the affordable side to be able to meet the requirements of L B eight sixty-six. So, you know, we talk a lot about private donations, talk about funding for affordable housing projects. One of the things we highlighted in this study as well was an affordable housing development specialist, you know, somebody that kind of oversees the programs for affordable housing and, you know, what's their progress and and what what kind of efforts are being done to make sure that those projects are getting in the ground. So that was kind of one of the things that that we highlighted in this in this final plan. But at this point, you know, the study's completed. It has been reviewed. Your planning commission took a look at it and had very glowing reviews about it. At least that's how I would put it. But Tim, do you have any questions or comments or anything? I'll turn it over to you if you have anything to say about it.
Tim Kealan with Hannah Kealan Associates, thirty-two seventy-five Holdridge, Lincoln, Nebraska. Thank you very much for having us. Really, it was a real pleasure working with your community and your staff. You have good planning staff and good leadership. One of the things I want to point out, Keith talked about the affordable picture of that demand being at eighty percent of median income or less. We tie that directly to different tools of public intervention to assist with housing projects like C D B G dollars, home funds, tax increment financing, housing trust funds, both state and national. We're fortunate today that there's quite a few more buckets of money to help out with housing, and that's been recognized. And so therefore, communities like yourself are being asked to put this affordable housing plan together to utilize those dollars. By having this plan, I must tell you, I've probably been involved in about five hundred housing studies in my career. And doing a plan like this, you're one step ahead of other communities in regards to securing dollars to assist with that. The other thing I wanted to point out, too, is you have some tremendous stakeholders, housing stakeholders in the community and the county that can assist with this process. At this point in time, it's just kind of an organizational process to put everybody together and secure dollars to do different housing programs or projects. And this town definitely has a capacity to do that, and I think that will be done. So we can answer any questions that you may have. Keith kind of buzzed through the executive summary. As he mentioned, the study itself, or the plan itself is fairly large, but we think it's good and we think it's doable. You know, we like at Hannah Kealan, we like to think that we do studies and plans that can be implemented. So we've spent quite a bit of time on the implementation pieces for this. So any questions or comments?
I just had a few, just a couple of questions, Mr. Kealan. So the full report, it gets into talking about the existing houses and stuff. I don't see a lot in the executive report, but how do how does Bellevue fit into it with the with what we have right now? Was that looked at or?
Sure, absolutely. We looked at all the housing stock, the condition of the housing stock. We got reports from the assessor as well. We went out and did fieldwork and looked at the housing stock. So there's some issues there associated with housing rehabilitation, which we also address in the plan itself, not only new construction, but housing rehabilitation. You have a very low vacancy rate. Not a good thing necessarily when you're trying to run a housing economics or a housing industry and try to get more folks into your community, more taxpayers, et cetera, and so forth. You want that vacancy rate close to six or seven percent just to provide an option of choice. And we're talking about vacancy of housing units which have different price points associated with them, too. So you're up against, you have so much opportunity, but then you're kind of up against the walls that relates to you don't have enough housing stock out there to kind of start meeting this. So it's, but then again, you still have development or construction activities. So you want to keep that rolling and make sure that it gets off of one track and goes on to several different tracks for different housing types, be it senior housing, off-base living, whatever the case may be, some more, secure some more housing for employees, more workforce housing, that sort of thing. So I answered your question, but yeah.
So do those numbers look bad? Are we close? Or are we, I mean, do we have affordable housing here in just a general?
Oh, sure you do. You have a housing stock. You have an inventory of affordable housing. You could just use some more as it relates to the lack of. That's why we broke out that table four, I think it was, that showed you exactly what the affordable units should be, that number. But then further on in the study, in the study itself, we get into a whole table there. We look at price points all the way from very affordable, inexpensive housing to very expensive housing. So we address housing for all the different price points and all the different households. So we looked at all of that, but then came back and looked specifically at at the affordable at eighty percent of area median income. It's all in there. It's a lot of information.
Yeah, no, it's it's very in-depth, so I appreciate. And then statute is Bill eight sixty-six? Is that the bill that was, that's why we're doing this, right?
L B eight sixty-six.
Is that, that was just cities of fifty thousand or more that have to apply?
That's correct. Well, we got five.
Four or five.
Four.
Four. Grand Island, so.
Now, other communities will have to do the same thing regardless of their size within the next couple of years. And so they're trying to like give some clarity. They got buckets of dollars for different housing projects. Let's make sure that the communities have a plan, how to spend it. And so it should be easier for you to access dollars for different programs or projects. This in itself also will be attractive to developers. When Hannah Kealan does housing studies, we get phone calls from developers like, where are you guys working now? You know, that kind of thing. So it's like, you know, because we want to go in there and do some projects. And they make the assumption that we, when we do housing studies or housing plans, that we reach out to the community and it's a positive thing. You know, it's a positive thing, a study or a plan is being done, and that the community is welcoming more housing types for the residents.
As tight as Sarpy County is, I mean, we've got five cities within the county, and there's a lot of population here. Bellevue's obviously over the fifty thousand threshold, so just trying to see how that plays in. So is all the affordable housing go to Bellevue and doesn't apply to the others? But you're saying the next couple of years, that'll all catch up.
Yeah, they'll have to do that as well. Your other communities will have to do that in the county. And I think it's next two years, isn't it? It's next two or three.
That's correct. So, you know, cities like Omaha, Bellevue, Lincoln, we had a tighter timeline. We had to do it within like the two-year timeline of the bill being passed, but the other communities will have to follow suit within the next couple of years. So they'll be doing the exact same thing that we did here.
Yeah, Grand Island's in there, too. Yeah, was the other one.
I think my last question was, I mean, this this will help us get those funds coming in by having the program, the plan.
Absolutely.
I mean, the big thing that I noticed is all the subsidy money. I mean, there's a ton of subsidy money in there. I mean, talking about community foundations, you're talking about C D B G. You're talking about developers and builders. It just doesn't look possible when you look at half that money is all subsidy. So I just.
Well, you know, the thing about it is, it's you have to have confidence in your in your stakeholders, your housing stakeholders in the community and your leadership. Everybody should be kind of on the same page as it relates to making sure that there's some projects being done. We did talk about the Affordable Housing Specialist. I believe this community is large enough to have an individual like that with a lot of skill sets to be able to put projects together, attract. You know, it's kind of like economic development with housing and and the tax base that you could bring into the community, the additional tax base through residential development, as well as sales tax and everything else, you know, it's just would be terrific. And so that's kind of the goal that you set at. We would hope that the steering committee would maybe continue on and take a look at the the plan itself and look at the priority projects, put some priority projects out there. And developers, housing developers, I say this because I know them and I've worked with them doing different studies and things of that nature. But housing developers will look for the ease, the community with the easiest route to getting projects done. And if you have a friendly community for housing and you have a housing plan, and if you have someone like a housing specialist that can kind of guide them through the process and get them the bucket of monies that they need for these different subsidies, it can move pretty quick.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Kealan? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tim. That's a good presentation verbally, but thank you both for the written one. It's it's exceptional. Following up on what the mayor said about how are we doing, one thing that stood out to me were that we have a waiting list of six hundred people that are waiting for affordable housing locally. That's sizable amount of people. And another one, I think it's in table four, where there are thirty-three housing units that you anticipate need to be condemned and not livable. units that you anticipate need to be condemned and not livable. And we've been doing a pretty good job, I think, and we've been staying on top of those. But as I drive around, I see some that are kind of marginal and I started rethinking, maybe there are almost that many. But I think we've done a very good job and just your comments on that, on both of those numbers.
Well, I think that, you know, you have done a good job of taking care of bad housing, you know, making it sort of leave this earthly plane, so to speak. So it's like, that's a good deal and you need to continue that. And you need to make some decisions about future code enforcement, you know, is it by complaint? Is it a systematic code enforcement? You know, just have to kind of look at things like that because bad housing is bad for your economy. And when we say bad housing, a minimum doesn't meet like section eight standards or something. And so there has to be in this process of all the shiny and the new, of taking a look at the old and, and spots that it sets on, you know, to rebuild on it as well because you have infrastructure and all that system running by those lots. So it's, it's, it's a job. And it's, it's a job that's bigger than just the folks in this room can do. And that's why I kind of go back to having, you know, a collection of, of housing stakeholders, you know, looking out for seniors, looking out for different, you know, different groups in the community, keeping an organized group of stakeholders and being proactive about these projects. And there again, I mentioned the specialist, you know, someone that can kind of guide that process. And we don't recommend that for every community, but this community is big enough and the industry is hot enough for housing that, you know, you could definitely use someone like that.
And two of the groups in that, one was the young airmen at Offutt Air Force Base who needed the housing, and the other was senior citizens or handicapped folks. So I think having that representation is important.
Well, your senior citizens, you definitely have to look out for them all the time. And you want to make sure that there's a special initiative there for senior housing for all different price points, not over only the affordable, lower-cost housing, but the upper, you know, the upper price point type of housing for seniors, giving them some options, you know. Baby boomers are kind of moving into that process where they want some options like that. They want easier options to live in and spend more dollars with accessibility to other spots in the United States or whatever, you know. But so there always has to be a senior housing initiative, as well as a workforce housing initiative, working with your major employers.
In my most recent AARP magazine, it talks about how many seniors are needing the more affordable housing. So I, I appreciate having the tiers, but I'm hearing more about rents being so high that more and more people are paying more than thirty percent of their income, which makes it very challenging. They take two jobs and we don't always see those folks. They're kind of off our radar screen many times and we don't always know how we're doing. So I think some of your numbers and information are very useful to help us to see that.
And sometimes our numbers are somewhat conservative too, you know, but we don't give you a lot of pie in the sky numbers to chase after. But what you do with these numbers and what you do with this action plan is put together specific housing projects or initiatives. And that can only be done with the folks locally and, and your stakeholders and your planning department, your planning commission and so on and so forth. So there's a lot of work to be done in the implementation piece of this, or the implementation stage.
Yes, thank you. I, I'll just do a couple more. I read through this and it was very interesting reading. I actually went from the first page.
You're gonna ask me a question that I haven't read lately.
More than once. So you did a very nice job. I noticed you have tiny houses listed, which we haven't really dealt much with here as other communities have. And I know the University of Nebraska at Omaha, Bing Chen and the engineering department has started working on designing and putting solar units on them. And there's, there's a, a national movement, probably international, on more condensed housing and tiny, tiny houses. Would you comment a little more on that?
Well, the thing about it is, you know, there's some communities exploring this, you know. We worked in Dodge County and they were looking, doing that project, like a small subdivision of just tiny homes or smaller condensed housing units. And I'm, I'm going to be working with a school district pretty soon because the superintendent says I can't get entry level, I can't find housing for entry level school teachers. And so we're going to be looking at maybe a small subdivision of about eighteen of those that can be owned by the, you know, and a joint ownership between a private developer and maybe the school, the school district and try to, you know, and make those available for new entry level single, more than likely because they're tiny houses, single school teachers. So you kind of have to look at different niches for that type of housing. We also need our large, you know, our large twenty-five-hundred square foot, you know, three-bedroom, four-bedroom homes, two for families. So it's, it's a good mix there.
Yes. And going back to what the mayor said about funds that are available, Senator Wayne, who introduced this in twenty-twenty, has said in the upcoming legislative session, he's going to be looking at appropriating state funds to assist. And I know HUD and there are some other federal funds that are likely to be available too, that are still being worked on. Any comments on that?
Well, it's just, you know, the legislature has gotten very sensitive to the whole housing issue, primarily led by that workforce housing. And the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority, I've had the good fortune to sit on a steering committee that they're putting together a statewide strategic plan. Carolyn also is on that committee. And, and so there's a lot of, there's, it's just, it's just, it's just a red-hot topic. And people have come to the, they've come to the conclusion that housing just doesn't happen on its own, you know. And if it, if you, so you have, every community where they're looking, they're asking them to do plans like this and then be proactive about putting together some housing initiatives. And you'll start to feel the difference as it relates to that. There's almost a new funding source after every new legislate, after new legislative setting and so, session. So it should be interesting what comes around this next time.
Yes, and I am looking forward to that component. The, the other component was the partnerships and we've got some great ones and I really appreciate those. The, the one thing I didn't put in, you also mentioned sidewalks and cleaning up areas, litter, other things beyond just houses that may not be livable. And could you comment on the sidewalks? Because I've kind of been beating that drum for a while.
It's a necessity to have sidewalks, you know. And so unless, you know, there's, there's subdivisions that have been planned in the past that don't have, you know, pedestrian walkways and things of that nature. But typically they'll have trails through them, you know, that type of thing. And not necessarily just sidewalks out front. But, you know, it's, 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 you know, do you have an appetite for sidewalks? Some, you know, leadership have an appetite for that, some others don't. So I, you know, I think it's a good idea to have sidewalks and to make sure that they're usable sidewalks as well. So.
Right. Thank you. I'll, I'll stop for now. Others may have questions, but it's a very good study. I, I commend everybody doing it, our staff, the planning commission who had the hearing. And it's very thorough. It's, to me, it's like being shovel-ready. So now that we have the plan and the funds are there, we're ready for it as we take the next steps. It's just putting us a little farther down the road. So thank you for doing a good job.
You're quite welcome. And it's, it's our privilege to work here. One of the things I want to see happen next is, and I've even told the steering committee we worked with, I'd be more than happy, you know, Keith and I to pop up here and, and just sit in on some meetings or a couple of meetings, you know, taking the plan itself and sort of set some specific initiatives, housing projects, like go for those, you know, a workforce project, a senior project, that sort of thing. And a family project, whatever, you know, and just, just really concentrate on that. Find the developer for it, find the dollars to subsidize it, make it affordable. Maybe have some mixed housing projects where you have some upper price point projects mixed with some, you know, lower-cost projects. So there's a lot of different things can happen.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, being in the real estate market, also a degree in engineer, I love data, statistics, all those types of things. But I do have a couple of questions because people throw out the word affordable housing all the time. And what is the definition of affordable housing for this area? I, I mean, I think I saw on there it was like two sixty-five to three thirty-two. Is that, did I, is that correct in the information? Because when, when they say we need affordable housing, my question is, what is that amount?
Well, we talk about affordable housing. We talk about families, not, individuals or families not spending any more than twenty-five percent of their income for rent and, and/or a house payment insurance and so on and so forth. So it's that, twenty-five percent's always that big number. And then you add another five percent on there for like utilities and whatever. And that's changed a little bit, you know, it's kind of been bumped up to more thirty and thirty-five and that sort of thing. So affordable housing applies to persons of all income levels. But for purposes, affordable housing plan, we, we associated affordable with the funding sources that are available. And so we did eighty percent because at eighty percent, you're eligible for a lot of different projects, dollars, a lot of different monies available, state and federal dollars available to help subsidize the project and make it affordable, both owner and renter. Some housing, some affordable housing for persons of maybe thirty percent of income or less, it's just very difficult. You, you just can't subsidize it up to, you know, eighty to eighty-five percent. So you have to look at some other activities such as purchase, rehab, resales, things of that nature. So.
The, 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 the meeting that we had, the mayor and I were involved with the Board of Realtors and they said, you know, we're going to look at the area to see if we have affordable housing. And I said to them, what is your definition of affordable housing? They said, new construction, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And believe it or not, we are the only city that has it. There was, there's a developer that has done, that has done this. And they, they came down here because they couldn't believe it, they were shocked. And I think that was the last time we actually heard from them about, you know, we need to have it, we need to have it. Well, we have it. And so again, that number, Tim, comes out as to what's the definition, you know. And it's, it's finding out what that threshold of what people say is affordable housing. So, and in addition, this study, when they talked about affordable housing, that also included rentals, correct? Rentals and purchase. Okay. And then did you look at, because I did not have the opportunity to read through all of it, but I will take it on vacation and I will. But did you also take in as to what's, what's being planned? The, the different areas that are, that have already been approved and they're, they're planned, planned out as far as, and that's also included?
That's also, you know, anything that's on the drawing board is included in demand analysis. You know, we don't, you know, we include those numbers in there, you know, for the demand, the target demand. Because oftentimes they're planned and they don't happen, that sort of thing, but they still need to happen, you know. So, you know, and the same with, you know, rentals or ownership, you know, if they're not sold and occupied, if they're not rented and occupied, then they still are projects that are on the table and considered in that target demand. So in that target demand numbers, you will see, you won't see this specifically, but that includes some projects that are on the drawing table.
Okay, perfect. And last but not least, with regards to sidewalks, I know that's a hot topic.
Yeah, it is.
We did do, within our city, we did do a study and ask the homeowners in a particular area, northwest Bellevue, if they wanted sidewalks. We had a, over thirty percent return on this, on the, the survey, and over eighty percent said, we don't want them. And, and, and we were, we were shocked as to what that number was. And it's for a variety of reasons. And we, we were all shocked by what that was. And so I know that in the new subdivisions, it's all required and it's what's to happen. But the, the, and I'm happy to provide you any of that documentation that you need with regards to that. I, I agree with you. I think sidewalks are necessary, but I think it also, there's a, there was a young family that lived across the street from me and I said to him, do you want a sidewalk? And he's like, no. I said, you've got young kids. We have a grade school that's half a block away. And he goes, I don't want to have to maintain it. So there's just different viewpoints with regards to the sidewalks. But again, I'm, I'm happy to give you that data if you're interested in it.
Sure. I got a comment I want to make too on that. Just going back to the affordable housing definition and what you were talking about, there is a table in the target demand information, the, the, I think it's section four of the study, that identifies price points or price products based upon the different area median income levels. And so you kind of get a range for, you know, your low income, a range for your moderate income and a range for your upper income. So you can kind of see, you know, based upon family size, based upon incomes, what is affordable to that particular income bracket.
I thought, I thought I saw it in the executive summary somewhere of that two sixty-five to three thirty-two. That's, that's where I thought it came in. Maybe not?
I know it's in the full study for sure. The executive.
It's number five, owner rental housing demolition replacement program. And the cost of two, estimated purchase, two sixty-five to three thirty-two per unit.
Oh, oh, you were looking at the, at the action plan itself?
Right.
Okay. And there's, there's another table.
This is in the big report?
Right. In the big report, there's the section before that where we talk about the housing unit target demand and what the statistical numbers are. We do break that down into different population groups. And then there's a table after that.
Okay.
That gives more of a range for like, you know, zero to thirty percent area median income, for example. What's the affordability level there? Thirty-one to sixty percent AMI. What's the range of housing affordability, you know, based upon affordable, the average affordable purchase price, based upon kind of what street rents are, kind of what the street rents are going for, for incomes, you know, for those different income brackets. And then be taken into account, you know, debt to income ratio and stuff like that too. So there's.
Which, which I like it better because I felt like sometimes you go to meetings and it's just a gut feel number that somebody throws out versus having the data. And this is going to be great data for us to be able to say, well, we have the information right here.
Right. And, and it talked also about, you know, how much affordable housing that you do have in the community with that, that one developer that was here. One of the, I just want to throw this one out because this was fascinating to me. One of the statistics that came out in the survey process that we did as part of this study, we asked the question, how much are you currently paying, you know, for monthly rent or home, or a mortgage payment, whatever it may be, to be in your housing situation? How much are you paying to live in housing? And we had, to that survey, we had about over five hundred responses to it, which was great. And about, I'd say about ninety-eight percent of, of those five hundred plus answered this question. And we had fifty-one percent of our responses identifying paying thirty percent or more for their, for their living situation, which by HUD's definition is considered a cost burden. You know, you're, you're paying too much for your housing. Some people identifying paying over sixty percent for their, for where they're living, which is, that's unheard of. I mean, I guess shouldn't say it isn't unheard of, but just the fact that of those, I think we had about five hundred twenty-seven participants in that survey and fifty-one percent of them identified paying too much for their housing. That was kind of a fascinating number. But, you know, and it, it just shows that, you know, there's, there's still a need for that affordable housing. There's a need for the study as well. And, you know, people and organizations are, are going to buy into it.
Absolutely. It, it's a great, it's a great study. Thank, I know we were required, but thank you for all the data.
Appreciate it very much. You know, we, we have fun crunching numbers and everything and taking different avenues for, you know, what the data means and then coming up with something that, you know, the community's going to be proud of. And not just something that, you know, they're going to have because it's required, but something that they're going to be able to go out, you know, shop it around and actually implement some of those suggestions in there, which I, I think, you know, the steering committee that we had for this was fantastic. They gave us a whole bunch of good information, lots of good avenues to go down and, and analyze for housing. So we're really appreciative of all the information they provided for us too.
I did want to point out one other thing too, that we kind of picked up in regards to living in Bellevue. There's a lot of folks that want to live in this metro area, but they like the smaller towns. Okay. That's as far as I'm going to go with that. But it's like, you know, they just like the smaller communities. They have a little bit more sense of community to them as opposed to the larger one of the bunch, so to speak. So I do want to point that out. And that's one of your attractions to, you know, building your capacity to do housing projects and things like that. So, and on that, now recall, in this, in the study itself, that we give, we give five-year and then ten-year projections too. So we kind of give them back and forth. So, any other questions or comments?
Councilwoman Welch, I just wanted to point out the numbers that you're looking for are on page twenty-two of the appendix in the full report. So those numbers are all there, kind of detailed out with the AMI.
That's why you're the best planning manager.
She is.
Also, real quick, planning commission did review the plan overall. They were highly complimentary of it. Couple of small revisions were suggested and have been incorporated by Hannah Kealan, but nothing that impacted the, the overall message of the plan. But they felt it was a good plan as well.
Any other questions? I just got three things. The, the state is always, they're working on property tax as well. So when I look at the TIF. So when I look at the TIF, um, I've always thought TIF, TIF's good if you got, especially if you got a commercial project where you're going to create jobs. Um, sales tax, because you're not going to collect property tax for fifteen years, so as long as it's doing something else. But we have been accepting more apartment complexes. Um, I think that's going to have to get bigger. We're going to have to open our eyes and accept TIF on, on, uh, multifamily projects. It sounds like by the program. Bellevue supports affordable housing. We're behind it. We, we, we want, want to have a program. Um, tax, you got Community A, Community B, you got a, you got a. Community A's got a quarter acre lot with a hundred thousand dollar house on it, affordable house. Community B's got a how, a two hundred thousand dollar house on that same quarter acre. Community A has to pay more s- more property tax for the same services. That Community B's paying less because their values more, so it just makes it difficult for a community to pay for things. I, the state's got to think about this stuff.
Yep. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback on that, that, that the gentleman that was doing the two hundred and fifty thousand new construction is, he was able to do that. Because he got TIF financing for, for that land. So that would, that was how he's able to afford to be able to do that type of thing.
But it's not fixing our property tax problem, which the state has made number one priority, which I got, we got to figure out how to, how to fix that. Um, and then the interest, I didn't see anything in there for like a recession, like if we went through a three-year recession, does that put things off? And people, people still need affordable housing, but the rates just doubled. So you're getting a, what you bought a two hundred, four hundred thousand dollar house for, you can only buy a two hundred thousand dollar house. You can't build anything for that. So how does the interest rates? I mean, if 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 we do go into a recession and things go up to ten, twelve percent. It's a, it's an excellent question and we have to, when we're doing the studies, we're putting the tables together and the demand tables, et cetera. It's like, we kind of have to draw a line in the sand, you know, chronologically, here's, here's where we're at. I did, you know, for purposes of the price points, I jacked up the interest rates, which they've changed quite a bit. Uh, I used like a six and a half across the board and things like that for price points for ownership and, you know, and backed into affordability that way. Um, but, um. You're going to have your ups and downs and one of the, I, one of the ways we always try to protect ourselves as consultants. And I'll, I'll let something out of the bag here, okay, for the next consultant that comes up here. But, you know, we take a conservative look at things, all right? And so we have a, when we come up with a big demand number, we have a, what we call a development capacity percentage. And so we take that big number that we have and we might just apply maybe forty-five percent to the demand for owner and maybe sixty percent for renter. And so we kind of back off that big number. And that's why you'll see that in that one table that we showed, that we do have a development capacity percentage that we apply. Based upon some of those issues that you raised, Mayor, in regards to the economics up and down, so on and so forth, as well as the interest rates. None of us have a crystal ball. I wish we did, but, you know, we're trying to make sure that we kind of cover that base by being somewhat conservative in the process.
Sure. It, just comments for people to think about, so.
I think it's good.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the report. It's excellent and.
The tax increment financing, uh, you know, you're going to, some communities are kind of pressing the brakes a little bit on it. Um, I've been involved with that since day one at the Haymarket and Lincoln, you know, and I've done, you know, like a couple hundred different light and substandard studies. And I see how tax increment financing is being in use in different communities. Um, there's still a but for attached to it, okay? So there's not an entitlement attached to it. There's a but for attached to it. And that's, so it's kind of that last bucket that's brought up on the table. When somebody brings an affordable housing project to you and says, we need tax increment financing to do this project, say, okay, that's fine. Let's take a look at it, you know, the numbers associated with it and that type of thing. So, um, it's a good tool to use. It doesn't have any income qualifications associated with it, whatever you do, housing, you know, and. Uh, retail or whatever the case may be, it's a wonderful tool to have. And, uh, we, we try to encourage communities to have kind of a bucket TIF is what we call it. Where you have a redevelopment area and you sort of put, kind of collect some of the increment from other projects that aren't being used. That can be used throughout that redevelopment area for like sidewalks and things of that nature. So there's a lot of creative things you can do with tax increment financing. So.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Appreciate you coming out and explaining all that.
True time.
Yep. All right, so we're going to go to item fifteen C on your agenda. It's been moved to this point in time. And that is resolution number twenty twenty-two dash forty. Approve the City of Bellevue Affordable Housing Action Plan and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item fifteen, I'm sorry, fifteen C.
Motion by Welch, second by Preister. Any comments, questions? All right, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Back to item eight, organizational matters eight A. Recommend appointment of Randall L- Lassenberg to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate to serve a three-year term ending February two thousand twenty-five. And reappointment of Councilwoman Kathy Welch to the Design Review Board to serve a three-year term ending August two thousand twenty-five. And motion, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve item eight A.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Just for clarification, the reason I pulled this from the consent agenda, it was based on legal's recommendation and I'm going to be abstaining from voting.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Please vote.
I have five yes votes and one abstention, if the Councilwoman Welch abstaining, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight B, recommend the appointment of Annie Matthews as the interim city attorney. And do I have a motion there? Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we approve item eight B.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Do we have any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Congrats, Annie. Item nine, approved citizen communication. Uh, we have none this evening. Item ten, liquor licenses, ten A. Recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. The application for TFL Inc. doing business as MegaSaver for a class D liquor license. At one twenty-seven oh one South Twenty-Eighth Avenue, Bellevue, to sell beer, wine and distilled spirits. Off sale only and Kamal Samiev as manager. And I will open up the public hearing. Um, anyone wanting to speak, please come forward. Are you the applicant?
Yeah, I am not Kamal Samiev, but I am also with MegaSaver. My name is Tamer Samiev.
Tamer?
I'm an operations manager for the company and I'm here if there are any questions.
Thank you for coming out. Council, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Just something real quick. Are you planning anything different, new, change, renovate? Keep the U-Haul? Anything going to change?
Yeah, we're definitely keeping the U-Haul, um, but so far we've already renovated the building with more to come. Um, have, have you been in the building?
Yes.
Chance, okay. Um, we've opened it up a lot, so there's no longer that like wall right when you come in where the cashier is behind. So it's all like open. We think it looks better now and more to come.
There used to be a car wash in that building. Is that going to not still be there?
Um, to be decided. I I don't think it was functional or.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else in the audience that would like to speak during the public hearing here, please come forward? Anybody else? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. The application for TFL Inc. doing business as MegaSaver. For a class D liquor license at one twenty-seven oh one, South Twenty-Eighth Avenue, Bellevue, to sell beer, wine and distilled spirits. Off sale only and Kamal Samiev as manager.
That was a motion. Second.
Yep, second.
Okay. Uh, motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. You're good and could.
Thank you very much.
Did you sign in?
I did, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, eleven A, ordinance number four one one two. Request to annex miscellaneous right of way, rights of way, applicant City of Bellevue. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one two, an ordinance to annex to the City of Bellevue. Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate. Lying within the below described boundaries to the City of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item eleven A, which is ordinance, ordinance four one one two.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B, ordinance number four one one three, amending the economic development program and authorize the mayor to sign. Uh, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one three, an ordinance to amend Article nine to Chapter eleven. Of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the Economic Development Program for the City of Bellevue, Nebraska. And to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Looking for a motion, Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item number eleven B, which is ordinance number four one one three.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, twelve A. Ordinance number four one one four, an updated compensation ordinance to reflect the new minimum wage. Set in Nebraska by anticipated changes to state statute forty-eight dash twelve oh three, per voter passage of Nebraska Initiative four thirty-three. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one four, an ordinance of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska. Classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees. Providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form. Repealing ordinance number four one one zero and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I will open up twelve A for public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak regarding ordinance number four one one four? Please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Third reading will be January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. here in the council chambers. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, we have none this evening. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, a request for a conditional use permit for Lot Two Bellevue Business Park replat six. For the purpose of an automobile repair shop, applicant Dennis R. Schror. LLC, general location, South Tenth Street and Alberta Avenue. And is there anyone here? Please state your name, address and sign in, please.
Good evening. I'm Don Heine with Thompson, Dresen and Dorna, one oh eight three six Old Mill Road, representing the applicant Dennis Schror LLC. Uh, this project will provide a new bu- building for primarily vehicle storage on a currently vacant lot. Uh, this will develop a small portion on the southerly end of that lot. Uh, with this development, uh, Mr. Schror has agreed that he will not, uh, come in with any future development on that lot. Until such time that Carey Street on the north end of the project has been improved or would be improved with a project that he would come in with. Uh, another, it does say that, uh, that this provides for autom- automotive repair in this building. The primary reason for this building is vehicle storage of his private vehicles, although there could be some repair going on in the building. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, any questions for Mr. Heine? Thank you for coming out. I'll open the public hearing. I haven't done that formally yet, so I'll open the public hearing for fourteen A. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding fourteen A, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve item fourteen A.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Councilman Prester?
Any timeframe on Carey Street being improved at any time?
No timeline at this point. Again, it'll be dependent upon development. Um, we have had some inquiries over the last couple of years about the vacant lot to the north. So, and again, I'm sure at some point Mr. Schor will want to come in and also do, uh, the north half of his lot. So at that time, um, I would anticipate, you know, obviously Carey Street will be improved at that point. But no applications right now that would force that improvement.
I I did notice the property on Carey, uh, there used to be a storage yard that did sell, so maybe we'll see something coming in at some point.
Councilman McCaw?
Can you, can you clarify storage of vehicles? Is that inside storage, outside? I mean, what, what storage of vehicles mean?
There will be, uh, space inside for vehicles, but there also will be space outside. Uh, the parking area where the outside storage would be will be fenced as required, uh, by city code. With a, a board on board obscured fence that will be at least six feet high.
And they're like, the vehicles operate or they just?
Uh, I believe they, ye- yes, they're operable, yes.
Yeah, so per, per ordinance, they would have to be operable. It can't be junk or salvage. Um, as Mr. Heine pointed out, there will be a privacy fence and there's also landscaping. There's a landscape plan. So landscape apartments will be met as well for anything that's parked outside.
I think that's my question, that they're, they're not just junk and storage and pieces.
No, he, he previously owned the old Saturn building to the south of this. And once he sold that, he had been using that area for storing of his private vehicles. Uh, now he needs a new place to, to place those vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Did the old Saturn building have the same usage? Wasn't that, they had an auto repair in that building?
Correct. They, um, they were zoned light industrial. They had, uh, the car sales, auto repair, body work, all of that.
All right. Any other questions? Motion by Casey's, or motion by Cook, seconded by Casey on fourteen A. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two zero two two dash three eight. A resolution approving the creation and bylaws of the mayor's youth council and authorize the mayor to say, sign. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
I'm honored to, uh, recommend approval, resolution two zero two two dash three nine.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment, two amendments. I don't know if they should need to be separately or together, together. Um. I talked with Mr. Risto and Mr. Preister a little bit. Uh, part of our western side i- includes Papillion La Vista. And so I think we somewhat agreed to that we would change it to read. Uh, two members from Omaha Public Schools. And two members from Papillion La Vista Public Schools. And the rest of the, the four members, four members, the two members, two members, that all would stay the same. And then because we have off it, uh, here and we want off it, um. Uh, here and we want off-it, um, membership part of this. Some of our off-it housing is not in the city, it's on the base. So in Article three, section one. Will put in there a wording of for purposes of meeting the Bellevue residency requirement for youth council membership. Residents in or on off-it air force base housing owned by the United States of America. Shall constitute residency within the city of Bellevue. And that's it.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister. Any comments or questions on the amendment? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, I, we're really trying to be very inclusive and make sure we don't leave anybody who lives within Bellevue. Out, I think, uh, from my perspective, I think it's a great idea, great opportunity for civic engagement. And with the amendment, I think it gives a little more flexibility to areas that are not specifically identified. And if there's no hurry, if there's something else or in the future. You can always bring it back, hopefully we can add to it or modify it in any way it may need in the future. I hope it continues on for a long time.
Perfect, I appreciate your, uh, help on this, I actually brought this forward, like, my first six months, but we had. Some floods and stuff that got in Legals' way, so. Um, we put that on the back burner, we brought it back forward again, um, and I appreciate you working on it, and that's. This whole idea is be inclusive, get everybody's ideas and, and, uh, so I appreciate it.
And I just appreciate all the work that Councilman Cook put in it. Cause he's got the charts, he went through the details, he looked at boundaries of school districts. He really put a lot of work into it, so kudos.
Yep, I think it can be a, a very good tool for the city to, to reach out, so. Uh, so we have a motion by Cook, seconded by Preister to amend as just stated by Councilman Cook, does anybody need that repeated, or do you understand it? Okay, and any questions? Alright, please vote on the amendment.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, and we have a motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw on resolution fifteen A. And now as amended, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item fifteen B, resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-nine. A resolution repealing resolution number twenty-two-two dash zero-two. Effective January one, two thousand twenty-three. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make the motion for approval of item fifteen B.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Preister, any comments or questions on fifteen B? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item fifteen C, resolution number twenty-two-two dash forty, approved. Oops, sorry, yep. Uh, item sixteen B will go to current business. Sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment extending the community development block grant. Subrecipient agreement with the Housing Foundation for Sarpy County for the mixed-use development project. In the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw, comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a real estate broker services agreement on CBRE Inc. To be the city's real estate agent. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
I'll make the motion to approve item sixteen C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Welch. Comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just my concern of accountability. Who else applied for this? Did we have a, a process or something, and the reason I ask, I know we've got real estate people here. And th- there shouldn't be a conflict, and I don't think there is. And so it's just clear for the public that there isn't, so that's my reasoning.
There were three applicants, um, our prior. Real estate, um, column, you remember column from. It came from Collers over to Sage. And then there was Oak Investment, and then we had CBRE, which the rep is here in the building with us today, so those were the three, it was an RFP that was put out. And then a committee reviewed that RFP. And scored each one of the applicants and came up with the highest scoring applicant out of the three. So these two did not apply, nor would we have let them.
Would you say that again?
Or would I have done it?
So, um, no connection to the city.
Okay, that was for the benefit of the public, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, thanks for coming out, in case there was any questions? Um, actually. Do you want to introduce them? Just, you want, just put a face with a name, so.
Good idea.
Uh, good evening, uh, members of the city council and, uh, other assorted, uh, city. Personnel, uh, my name is Mike Kaufman, I'm from CBRE. Uh, office address one-one-two-one-three Davenport Street in Omaha, and, uh, very happy to be. Uh, receiving your approval tonight, and, um, happy to answer whatever questions you have, introduce our firm, and. Eager, uh, anticipating and, uh, ready to go here.
I just need your contact information at some point.
Sure, I'd be happy to give you my card when we're done.
Perfect.
Like, you also have a partner that works with you, I know she's not here tonight, but then also behind that is the full firm, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the, uh, I guess the local, more or less a local field agent for CBRE, though, uh, we're a, we're a, uh, uh, corporate office. The person in our, um, I guess who spearheads the, uh, program, she's up in Minneapolis, her name is Anne Rahm. Uh, she, uh, heads our regional, what we call our PIEZ program, stands for Public Institutions and Education Solutions. So, um, more or less, uh, I guess I'll be doing the day-to-day field work, uh, more or less kind of the grunt work. Uh, dealing with, you know, council, uh, members such as yourself and local. Business people, and then, um, she offers whatever assistance, uh, we kind of need, more or less she kind of parachutes in when we need her.
And CBRE has a vast amount of, uh, resources for data, so.
Yeah, we've got, uh, you know, not to, uh, pump us up too much, but we've got four hundred offices around the. Around the globe and over two hundred offices located in the United States, um, full-service real estate firm, no third-party. Or no, um, uh, we're a true third-party, uh, service provider. Uh, we, we try to, uh, discourage conflict of interest. I personally, I don't own any property and I'm, I'm a true third-party broker.
And we know that at times people don't always hire the brokerage, they hire the person.
Correct.
Tell me a little bit about you.
Oh, ha, well, uh, I'm a, a real estate broker with CBRE, I've been there for fourteen and a half years, before that, I was, uh. Practicing, uh, uh, attorney for another fourteen years, I graduated law school back in nineteen ninety-four. So, you know, I'm starting to get up there in years. Uh, practiced law for, uh, fourteen years, for the first five years, I worked at a firm, I'm from Boston, Massachusetts, I worked for a firm that I clerked in. Uh, doing the real estate law, primarily housing law. Uh, left the services, uh, worked, went to work my family business for another five years. Uh, we're in the plastics manufacturing business, I did, uh, legal counsel, I was also involved in sales and human resources, did, uh. OSHA compliance. Uh, we sold the company in two thousand four, uh, moved here, my wife is from Omaha, moved here in two thousand five. Worked at a downtown firm called, uh, Blackwell Sanders, now they're, they're Hush Blackwell, they sold, uh, to a firm, I think they're based out of Chattanooga, Tennessee. Uh, did real estate law for them, uh, practiced for there, uh, for three years. And then had the opportunity to join CBRE in two thousand eight, and, uh, haven't looked back.
Thank you, thanks, Mike, for coming out.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome. Alright, we, uh, have sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal from hotel and leisure advisors to prepare a business plan for the indoor water park. And hotel in amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Do you have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Comments or questions? Uh, Councilman Burns?
Yep, uh, Doug, I just have a few questions about this real quick, I just, um. Or Jim, yeah.
Sure.
Perfect, and you can.
I, the fan isn't running, so I can't hear.
I'm sorry if that, I don't mean that in a disrespectful way, by any means, so, okay.
Thank you.
Um. I just wanted to ask, so I just, maybe a little bit of clarification, because, so I know in two thousand twenty-one, um. We approved Lamprey Nielsen, uh, it was about thirty-one thousand dollars to do the aquatic study, and then, you know, just at the last meeting. It was about seventeen thousand some odd dollars for the nadatorium and the competitive diving. And then, you know, this, can you just explain, I just feel like maybe all these things are up in the air, and then. You know, is this? A specific item? I mean, like, more of a city venture, I think I'm just, maybe I just want some clarification, because I feel like. There's three separate things, they all deal with like aquatics or, and I just want to make sure we're not just throwing money. Uh, at this, at that, and this, and, you know, the result is.
Right, and that, that's a legitimate concern, um, it is a. Holistic view of what we need to do to develop a year-round water park and nadatorium. Uh, there is. Clearly a shortage of, um, competitive diving and swimming space in. Not only in the state of Nebraska, but throughout the country and in the region. Um, along with the fact that Bellevue is in need of expanding or creating a, uh. Um, an outside or indoor water park, or a combination thereof. Um, the marrying the two together creates a stronger business case. And this, um, item in front of you today is to help develop that business plan. So we as a city will have a greater, more in-depth understanding of that business model. And how it's going to work for the citizens of this community. And not only of the community, but of the region. And so when this park, um, if it comes through to fruition. Um, will not be a cheap investment. And so instead of being penny-wise and pound-foolish. We're going to spend some money upfront, so we have those details that can be shared with, um, all of you. And, uh, at the appropriate to- time, the community. But, um, we don't want to enter into. A business venture where we feel like we're at the mercy of a developer. So this is the information we're going to need to sit down with various developers to make a business decision about. How the city wants to move forward with this venture.
Okay, and that, but can you maybe just explain the difference between like the aquatic study that Lamprey Nielsen is doing? Versus what we just approved last meeting versus this right now?
Um, there's, there's not, this right now is the business plan. The aquatic study is what should it look like? And what types of, um. Opportunities do you have when you walk into the water park, what types of functionality do you need? Um, what types of water flow do you need, those, those things are going to come from all of the, that study. But that study only tells you what the people would like. It doesn't tell you what the business plan should be and what it should look like, and the cost of personnel and the cost of money. And how to make, um, how to hire a third-party operator. Or those types of things, which we as a community will have to decide.
Okay, and then just between, like, the nadatorium. So that. Yeah, so, just, I just want to make sure I'm following that.
True.
You're, so essentially we're, this is just the business plan?
Correct, it's to say. It's to say, this is what you will need to do to operate this facility. Am I, am I tracking correctly, Jim, with what?
Right, without getting really deep into the weeds here, it'll also give like the financial projections are, what the expenses are. Upfront, long-term, and then what the return on investment would be, so it, it's. Going to be a very detailed analysis, and that's what we'll present to you. And then you'll have a decision to make on what our investment is, what the private investment is. And what this thing looks like. There's a lot of bells and whistles on this thing, where with the development of the water park, there's separate developers. That are going to invest and build hotels. Restaurants, and those are commitments that are being made separate from us, but it'll also give us financial projections of what. That looks like from a revenue and a sales tax and property tax. Back to the city, which will all be part of that, the payback analysis, so. Gets a lot deeper than what the needs was, and Doug talks about what the need is from the community. But also what would make that financially feasible, so they kind of put that, that outside study. And the nadatorium is separate from what the water park is, because that'd be a competitive. So we're going to have two analyses that'll come forward, one for the water park and one for. Nadatorium, which is swim and dive, um. We're, we're learning a lot about this where there isn't a need, there isn't, within a two-hundred-and-fifty-mile radius, am I right, Mark? That. Our, our, our people here have to leave our city and go two-hundred-and-fifty miles to compete. Or practice, um, so if it's built here as part of this project. Not only would we be able to do is keep what our market is, but also attract others within the market since there's such a great need for this, so. They're going to get into the, the weeds of what all this looks like, what it's going to cost, what it, what the return on our investment is. And how we manage this and go forward, so, pretty comprehensive, a lot more than what you saw in this other one.
Correct.
Okay, and then is there a reason that, like, we're putting together the business plan versus? You know what I mean, let's say someone is. Doing a private venture, and, you know, they're not really. You know, that private entity or business, why aren't they doing it versus, you know, so can you just maybe explain that and break all that down, and?
So.
What's the difference here?
From our perspective, there's going to be multi-developers in it, so if. The water park and nadatorium are basically going to be separate, but maybe managed by a group as one. So this outside company has no relationship with the developer as far as. What, what the return is, they're going to examine what the details say of what this thing would, would require to be successful, and is the need there, and will it? So, we're investing in that to find out what our needs are, what we're going to put in. So there. There's a lot of pieces of this puzzle, so we'll be researching the turnback tax on the state side to help finance portions of this. Whether or not we use a half-cent sales tax, if there's bonding, all those things, this is what they'll put together for us. We want to be in the driver's seat on that from a cost perspective and an investment perspective, instead of relying on. If it's the person that owns it or runs it or manages it. We don't want their detail, we want our details, and that's why we've got a private party doing it for us.
Okay, and are some of the results going to be shared with us later?
Once this study is done, that, that'll be what we come to you and say, here's the big picture, so. Envision a large entertainment district with all these moving pieces in it, um, and then we'll present the pieces of that to you, what this looks like, what our investment is, what the outside investment is. What our returns, all that, so, that'll be something we'll bring you in on three-on-threes, and then ultimately, if we want to move that forward, then we'll put it out. The public vote for the, well, for your vote, in the public eye, but. That'll all be divulged to you, probably, we're trying to track this in the next thirty days. Get the final piece of the study done and have something to you in February or March.
Okay, so all these three things just sort of fit. Together, but then go into something larger, and you're saying that you already have commitments?
Yes.
Without being specific, I get that, but, um, okay. I hear that.
That makes, I mean, it's a head spinner, but it's, that's why we're using an outside source to help us. Put it all together, because there are a lot of pieces to this, and it's. They'll have a knowledge of like what the other investors are putting into it, it'll also give us like employment data. Tourism data, the whole thing, but what that engine is for our economy and how that looks, so that's what we're anticipating to come back on, so.
And it's the same organization that did the marketing and, uh, need study. So they have a lot of background data already to help. Finish out the business plan.
Okay.
I'd just add that Mark and Doug and Jim have been working on this for months and, and working very hard on it and. As each step comes up, it looks positive, we're not, we're not trying to force something, so. If there was a, a negative step, we'd probably just end it, but everything looks really positive, so that, that's why we're advancing.
Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Doug, I had some of the similar questions, I sent you an email, no. At, at this point, I think most of them are answered and I, I knew it was the feasibility financials and all of those things. But why the city and why not the developer, and I think Jim answered that pretty well, too. And I was going to ask then why now, but to be ahead of it, I assume is it, and so the, we're prepared and it's just the next step.
I think one of your other questions is a site where this will go at.
Yes.
We've kept that confidential because if that gets out, our price will probably go up. So, and the per acre, so we're keeping that under wraps, um, but that'll be presented to you at that time. Because our, our goal is to have that under option from a private developer. Pull that option in before we come to you is just to get an option on the table, but. If, uh, the way things go around here, as soon as they hear we're knocking on the door, prices double, so we'd like to just keep that at bay, so.
And I respect that and agree.
There are some options, there's just some options that are better than others, so.
Sure.
That's, you know, that could be three more steps trying to locate it, but.
Yeah, and the need is there with Coco Keys now lo- no longer operating as a social place. But then the competitive diving, all of those activities, yeah, I see a great opportunity there. Good, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions on sixteen D? Uh, we have a motion by Welch, seconded by Cook, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign supplemental agreement number twelve with Felsberg, Holt and Ulevig. For professional services on Thirty-Sixth Street preliminary design. North Three Seventy to Cornhusker Road in an amount not to exceed ten thousand two hundred and five dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Prester, seconded by McCaw, comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal with Hyman's Corp. For an emergency sanitary sewer line replacement in an amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand five hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve, uh, item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Prester, any discussion, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, item seventeen administration reports, comments must be limited to items on the current reports, monthly report is given at the first. Council meeting of the month, December report will be attached to the January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three council packet. Uh, we'll put those in the record and item eighteen, closed session? Do we have a closed session? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm going to make a motion, I move that the city council go into closed session at this time in order to discuss, uh. Personnel issue and avoid the needless injury to the reputation of individuals involved in this matter. The following individuals will be included in the closed session, Mayor Rustery Hyke, City Administrator Jim Risto. Council members Rich Casey, myself, Jerry McCaw, Don Prester, Thomas Burns, Kathy Welch. Intern City Attorney Annie Matthews, our HR manager Ashley Decker, and Chief of Police Ken, uh, Clary.
Motion by Cook, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Burns. Or seconded by Burns, motion by Cook, so any comments or questions from the council? Okay, um, please vote to go into a closed session.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, it is now.